And everyone, it is 8:30. I'll go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item on the agenda is an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens to be heard. Is there any citizen wishing to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda? Any citizens wishing to be heard? The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Motion offered from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes from the December 13th meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the minutes from the December 13th meeting.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item two today is a request the approval of a new TASER contract. We have Carrie Tooten from the Correctional Facility. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. So I am here asking permission to sign the new 2023 TASER contract. This was briefly talked about in the 2023 proposed budget.
Questions for Carrie. This item is in the Internal Service line item, correct?
Yes.
Any questions? Board wishes? Questions?
Move for approval.
Motion from Commissioner Ebinger to approve signing of the contract.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item three today is a request the approval of the final contract voucher for CASA 33. We have our county engineer, Justin Sorum. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, so I'm here this morning to request the approval of the final contract voucher for SAP 14633018. So this was, this project was done in 2021 with the final lift of asphalt being applied in 2022. It is Fifth Street and Holly. I think the project turned out really, really well. And the final contract voucher to be approved is $325,892.32.
Questions?
I'm sure. Was that, was that just, was that a split three ways? Was that the project that was split three ways?
No, it was just split between the city of Holly and Clay County.
Is this, is this our share?
Correct. There was a bunch of different split outs between storms who were straight reconstruction and sidewalk. That might be what you're thinking of.
Yeah, okay.
So the final contract is within about $170, or 100, yeah, $170. That's fairly.
Turned out really, really well. I had that way.
Approval.
Motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Item four today is a request to replace a county agency's social worker position in our Child Protection/Child Welfare Assessment Division. Steve will take this today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, we'd, there is an opening in, in the child protection and child welfare. They also do some family assessments. The, they're looking to replace the current position. From a, from a state standpoint, federal standpoint, they receive funding for these pros, for these procedures that they participate in. And so sending those out to additional caseloads would provide challenges for the existing social worker. So the request is to, to replace this position. It is in the current budget. It's anticipated that if the new hire were to be hired, hired at one, step one to two, there'll be a savings as the person leaving is on the step four. With that, I yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve about this item? There is a request to include backfill if possible.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Make a motion to approve with backfill.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the request with backfill. A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five today is a request the approval of a position change and reorganization. We have our Public Health Administrator Kathy McKay on. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the request today is, is really twofold. We did get a retirement notice at the end of October, so that wasn't budgeted for in our 2023 budget. But at this time, it's also appropriate with that resignation of the nursing director to make changes to our organizational chart. And I've included in the packet a copy of that with the highlighted areas. It's a very large program area under one nursing director. So at this time, I'm requesting to make that two positions because of the, the depth and the responsibilities of the supervision of both of those program areas. One is a family health area, and that includes all of our family home visiting, maternal child health home visiting, developmental screening, childcare consulting, school nursing, disease prevention and control. And those areas, public health nurse clinic. So that's, that's a, a large area just in and of itself. The second area that I'm proposing for the second position is in the adult health program area. And that is an area, program area that has grown over the years, continues to grow. We have a large number of clients we're going to be taking on in 2023. So that is all the case management, care coordination, case aid of, of those program areas. And we work with the Department of Human Services and the health plan. So that's a large area that continues to grow. So that would be my request for two program area, Director of Nursing responsibilities in lieu of just the one that we have had for a number of years. We have some savings. The nursing director currently has been with us for quite some time. So we have some savings with that retirement and adding a new supervisor. I anticipate there potentially would be an internal hire for the family home visiting program area. And so we'd, Darren has a, sorry, Darren has also a, a breakout of some of those salaries and budgeted areas. So hiring a second supervisor would, there would be some savings in that area for family home visiting, a little over $8,000. So we'd have some costs for a second supervisor, a nursing director, for the adult health program areas. And we anticipate that would be a little over $20,000. However, we also know that throughout the year, that can be mitigated with open positions. We know how difficult it is to recruit nursing positions. So that, that sometimes is a challenge. We have open positions sometimes for a number of months. And then also in public health throughout the years, we acquire new grant funding. So there's always that potential that there's additional grant funding as well. So we're, we anticipate that those costs could be mitigated in my 2023 budget. So what I'm looking for then is a replacement of that one nursing director position, changing my organizational chart to make that two, as I described, in the two areas that really have growth and, and the need for two managers. So I anticipate, again, potentially needing to advertise and hire for that second nursing director position. So I would have two nursing director positions in the end, which makes great sense, given the growth of our program areas.
Thank you for the presentation, Kathy. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Kathy, I'm a little unclear when you said you'd have to advertise for the second position. Have we got somebody to fill one of these positions already, or will both of these be advertised and we need to take steps to fill them?
Well, I anticipate there, there could be some restructuring for the family home visiting, the family health nursing director position. And potentially, I don't have anything set yet, but potentially that would, could be an internal process. And with my process that I'm anticipating, I wouldn't need a backfill on that one. There would just be some shifts in some responsibilities. The adult health program, potentially that would be an external hire.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the requests.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Steve, is this okay in one motion?
That would be fine, yes, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
We want to include backfill on that.
Kathy.
You know, I, I, we could put that in. I anticipate that I would not need backfill. If you'd like me to come back to another board meeting, if that's the case, I could certainly do that.
Well, that's, if we.
I'll just include it.
Include it, yeah. Okay, that fits with the motion and second. Clean it that way. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Item six today is the Minnesota Office of the State Auditor Report for 2021. We have with us today Karen Stackin from the audit staff. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
It's a little quiet.
I can get a little closer.
Okay.
Does that help?
Little.
Okay. Did you receive the documents that were hopefully included in your packet? It should be a required communication letter and then our letter of findings and our audit opinion.
Yes, that is included in our attachment J.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the required communication letter. And this goes through our responsibilities for the audit and gives you some information about the audit. On this first page, pretty much just goes through our responsibilities. Those were all spelled out in our engagement letter. And there is some additional information on the page that they haven't changed. And so it's pretty much just included more for your information. If you go to the second page on that letter, it starts off with the accounting policies. And we noted in here that there was no new accounting policies for the 2021 financial statements. There was no changes to existing policies. When you get down towards the bottom of the page, it talks about estimates. And there were some estimates included in the report. Those include things like your fair value of investments, allowance for uncollectible accounts related to capital assets and the depreciation, your compensated absences liability, landfill post closure, and then the OPEB and PARE liabilities. And on the next page, it does go through descriptions of how all those are determined. So I have that included for your information. At the bottom of the page, it talks about if there was any difficulties in performing the audit, and we're happy to report there are none. If you go to the top of page four, it talks about if there was any misstatements noted in the financial statements. And we just noted that we did identify some small items, but they were immaterial to the financial statements. Right below that, it talks about if there was any disagreements with management, and we're happy to report there are none. Where it talks about other matters at the bottom of the page, and then it goes on to the next page. I'm not going to go through all of that, but it gives you some information as to the detail of the other items included in the reports that are not included in the financial statements or the notes. And then on the bottom of page five, it does talk about a new accounting standard that will be applicable to the 2022 financial statements, and it's related to leases. So just to let you know that there will be a change in accounting coming for the next financial statement cycle. So that's the end of the required communication letter. Are there any questions so far?
Any questions for the board for Karen?
So the next, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, the next document in there is the Independent Auditor's Report. And the important part on this page is just the second paragraph where it says, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." That means you have an unmodified opinion, and it's the best opinion that you can get. So I just wanted to point that out. Then we can actually skip ahead to the next document, which is the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. And this has a summary of auditor's results on the first page. And it just goes through and shows at the beginning, once again, that you had that unmodified opinion. Right below that, it talks about if there was any internal control findings. And we had notified or noticed that there was no material weaknesses, but one significant deficiency identified. There was no noncompliance. When we get to the federal awards, similar, no material weaknesses, just one significant deficiency identified. We'll go through those in just a moment. And then it lists the federal programs that we had to test this year. And that was the COVID-19, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the child support enforcement, the foster care program, and the Medicaid cluster. And the threshold for determining those type A programs is $750,000. And the reason that's important is any program where you receive funds over that amount, we are required to audit once every three years. So it comes into the determination of how we chose those programs. And then just the last item on that page, it showed that the county was not considered a low risk GOTT. That was actually due to a finding in 2019. And since there was no material weaknesses in 19 or 2020, I'm sorry. Since there weren't any findings in 2020 and 2021, next year you should go back to being a low risk GOTT. And what that means is we only have to look at 20% of your federal awards instead of 40%. If you do go to the next page, there was one finding identified under internal control. It was the segregation of duties. I know you've seen this quite a few times in the past, and it's just due to the limited number of personnel within some of the county offices. What can happen when there are limited personnel is it could affect the county's ability to detect a material misstatement in a timely period by employees just in the normal course of their jobs. And we just recommend that the board be mindful of that situation occurring and wherever possible to try to implement oversight procedures. And then the last finding is on the next page. It was related to eligibility. And this had to do with the medical assistance program. And when we did our testing for eligibility, we looked at 40 case files. And in three of them, we could not locate the documentation to support the citizenship. So as I noted before, it was considered a significant deficiency, not a material weakness. So it did not affect the opinion on the program. And that was it for the findings for this year. So overall, the report is really good. And I just really wanted to say thank you to Stacy and Lori and all of the staff at the county. They helped make the audit go very smooth, and we're really looking forward to working with you again next year. Did anybody have any questions at all on the presentation?
Any questions for Karen on the presentation? It's not looking like it, Karen. Thank you for that. I also concur. It's, having been on the audit committee where we talked a little bit about this presentation, our, our Clay County staff just does a great job of being responsive and helpful. So I reiterate your comments on that. We appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today.
Board discussion wishes.
Move approval of the audit.
We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the audit report.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Item seven today is the request of approval for union contracts for the years 2023 to 2025. We have our Human Resource Director Darren Brooke today to present this. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. As you remember, last week, I brought three contracts that we have settled already to the board for approval. And this week, I have two more contracts for approval. They are the deputies and the correctional officers sergeants. Last week, I kind of covered what some of the changes were and everything. If you want me to review that, I can certainly do that as well. Both of these are essential units, and so it's good to get them done before the end of the year. The contracts are for three years, 4%, 3%, and 3% for the COLAs. They also include the Juneteenth holiday and a half-day Christmas Eve. Also, the ability to use vacation in sick once it's accrued. And shortening the grid from a two-year steps to one-year steps starting in 2024. And also looking at conducting a market study in 2024 to implement in 2025. And like I said, these are all three-year contracts as well. So, open for questions.
Okay, questions for Darren? The information is provided is not new. That has, you've worked really hard to get, get there, and it matches what we approved earlier for additional other staff. Commissioner Campbell.
Darren, are all of the contracts, did all the, do all of them expire at the end of this year?
Correct. Yes, we have, we have eight contracts total. This is four and five that we've settled. We still have three that are unsettled. I do have a meeting with one of the units next week, so hopefully we can make some progress on that. But we've gone back and forth, offer, counteroffer. We just aren't there yet.
Move for approval of these contracts.
Motion offered from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the union contracts.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any other discussion? Commissioner Campbell.
And I just want to clarify so that these new benefits that have been added to these contracts will apply to those contracts that have been approved.
Correct.
And for all nonlabor employees.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, nonrepresented.
Nonrepresented.
Employees.
Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second on the table to approve the contract, or the contracts. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll have you sign it at the end.
Item eight today is a consideration of the manager appointment for the Buffalo Red River Watershed Board. Administrator Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, back on December 13th, this board held two interviews. An interview to Mark Hansen and William Davis.
Clarify, that was Mark Anderson.
Mark Anderson, sorry. Mark Anderson and William Davis for the remaining term of January 2023 to August of 2024 as a Buffalo Red Watershed Manager position. At that time, the Clay County Board made the decision that we would make the final decision at an upcoming meeting, and so here we are.
Board discussion? Questions? Any other questions? We do need to appoint before the end of the year, so this is our last opportunity to do that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Davis.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to appoint Bill Davis.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you, Steve. And you'll work with the watershed to make sure they're aware. Item nine then today is committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start?
Sure. I had one meeting last week. The Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County met. We went through staff reports, looked at the budget. Again, there was a few adjustments with how some of those grants were going to work and some new guidance on that, and met a new board member. And just some general business. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
I'll report.
Commissioner Campbell?
On, let's see, do I have to report on the PIC committee?
And that highway clarification on the CDLs at PIC.
Oh, yeah, so at the PIC, we talked about the nursing director position, which we acted on today. And then we had some clarifications on the CDL licensing. And then we also discussed the establishing of a Personnel Board of Appeals. That's part of the removing of the, help me out, Darren.
Part of getting out of the merit system.
The merit system, there we go. Yeah, thank you. And that, and then we also, last week, we had a couple of meetings regarding, with the city of Morehead, we had a meeting with the city and a meeting on our own regarding legislative priorities for the diversion project primarily was what that was all about. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebinger?
Is one meeting report. Wednesday, the 21st, I attended a virtual meeting with some Morehead city officials, diversion authority officials, Commissioner Campbell, and Shelley Carlson, the mayor, John Shockley, attorney. This was a discussion on legislative priorities for the Minnesota side on diversion funding. The diversion authority itself, it being appropriate for them to lobby in Minnesota. We talked to our partners from Morehead, who have lobbied for the original flood work that they've done within the city. We have some mobility improvements and some county projects that we would like to get in the queue with the state. Just had a talk about what those are and what our priorities need to be. There are some funding opportunities with flood mitigation, or flood hazard mitigation fund that may be more desirable for some of the stuff we're looking at in the county than going with bonding. And kept it open. We will be working with Morehead during the, this legislative session. I think a little more oriented towards meeting some of the county needs as well. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Last week, I also attended the PIC committee meeting as presented or summarized by Commissioner Campbell. Steve, do you have any update?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I also participated in that PIC meeting. On the 21st, I met with, with a ribbon cutting committee in regards to the resource recovery facility. We have tentatively scheduled it on January 31st. We have a owners' meeting this afternoon, and if all things look, look good, we're going to shoot to put a save the date emails out later this week. And so we're looking again on January 31st, the afternoon, in that 1 to 1:30 timeframe. You each got emails this past week for the Clay County Annual Intergovernmental Retreat. That's going to be held January 20th, 9:00 AM to 3:45 at the Law Enforcement Center. I just let Jackie and I know if you guys plan to attend, we'll get you registered. And then we'll just make sure Jackie to add that to the commissioners'. And then we'll just make sure Jackie to add that to the commissioner's calendar. We did, did send the letter out to the legislative leadership in regard to this board's support of allowing testimony virtually that we discussed earlier this winter. I will make sure that I provide any response from our legislators that we receive. And then just a reminder that we are closed next Monday, January 2nd, acknowledging January 1st holiday. Noting that our, our January 3rd meeting will start at 8:15 with oath of office. That concludes my report.
Thank you. In regards to the correspondence to legislative leadership, I did have a phone call from Representative-Elect Joy that he did receive that and has heard that from other communities in our district. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the closed session, item 10. Are we waiting for anyone online or we can do it at this time?
Move to close.
We have a motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to close.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Gross. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. We are closed. We are back in open session for item number 11 today. We do have the letters from you. Thank you, Matt. So 11 is Bernson-McDonald Engineering Professional Consultant Firm, Contract Amendment Number Three. Now, this was postponed, so not tabled, correct? Correct. Okay, so we're good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, we, we did postpone this on November 22nd to further look at some questions with the contract, based on some of the questions that you brought forward that previous week. Matt has graciously sent us some of those responses, but is here today to answer some questions or any questions that you may have. I think maybe just to highlight a couple of things. One of the questions that came forward came about the bill rates, Matt, on the, on the amendment from, from July to October. The hourly rate was a little bit different than what it was from October moving forward. Could you share any insight there?
Sure, Darren. Yes, that has to do with who actually worked on the projects. So the first number, the hourly billing rate was, was an actual. And then what we estimate for the future work based on the type of work we're anticipating to close out the project, we had a different billing rate, but it'll ultimately be whoever actually, you know, has to perform the work that's needed. So if there's a submittal that requires, you know, additional, different level people to work on it, we'll use, it'll be those people. If it's a mechanical engineering submittal, they, it just depends on the type of questions that are asked or meetings that are attended and who attends those meetings. So it's really just an estimate, but the, ultimately it'll be based on who actually works on the project. But that was our best estimate for the projection going forward.
Questions from the board? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just want to thank Matt for, we've, in this process, we have been reviewing all the contract obligations, and we've had some questions, and we raised those questions with you, and you gave us the answers we were looking for. So I want to thank you for that.
Absolutely, no problem.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, based on, based on that, I would move that we approve Contract Amendment Number Three with Bernson-Mc.
Motion to approve Contract Amendment Number Three from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep, thank you. Have a great Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, item 12 then. We have been lucky to have the last two years Commissioner Kaylee sharing her time and talents with this board in Clay County, and we're sad to see you go, but it's been great to get to know you and your family and, and know that there are great things in store for you as well. But wanted to publicly thank you for your work here. And I think Steve had something.
I have a small token of appreciation that highlights, highlights many of the great things that you did over the last, last couple of years.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. I could share a couple of comments. Thank you, Madam Chair. This has been such a wonderful experience. I came into this thinking that I had a pretty good idea of how local government operated and learned a ton along the way. And one of the things that really stands out to me about Clay County and the county level of government is the amount of integrity from the top-down administration, all the way down through folks that are taking care of the grounds. I want the public to know that anytime there was ever an issue that came up, county staff went above and beyond to research and do diligence, making sure that all funds were used appropriately and that everyone is treated fairly. Another thing I learned is that no one person ever makes a decision in local government. It's always a group effort, and you can have a lot of confidence in your local government because of that. Each of the commissioners on this board brings a unique perspective and passion and discernment. I want to thank you all for so many things I learned from each of you. And special thanks to Commissioner Ebinger, who was in rookie school with me. Spent a lot of time together in various trainings, and he very graciously drove me many times so that we could save the county a few bucks by carpooling, and I cherish those conversations we had. Will deeply miss that. To all the county staff, thank you so much for your continued work and passion in investing in our community. You are all so wonderful. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Kaylee, if you'd like to adjourn the meeting, the gavel is yours.
Sure.
This meeting is adjourned. Congratulations.